All right, it's the order and serve pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Theresa, make your roll, please.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Wasslerger.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Jezz.
Here.
All right, do we have any additions or motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Oh, Eric.
Yes.
Jezz.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the 4-4 meeting?
I will make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Not? We'll vote Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jezz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
All right. Bill is due for payment. We have them listed in our packet. Any motions on that item? Can you agree with us?
Second.
Any discussion?
A lot of chain link. $459 for the chain link, but a lot of chain link. That's a lot of bikes.
New motor.
Yeah. New more.
New more, Bob.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Oh, I was gonna ask, what's great open spaces city management?
So, that's kind of an extension of, you know, the state has our city manager, city administrator group. This is kind of an extension. It has basically South Dakota, North Dakota, Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota. It's kind of a broader group and I started becoming part of that or asked to be part of that probably three years ago. Yeah, it's been four or five. But like I said, it just gives you a kind of additional resources. They meet once a month by Zoom now and kind of gives you a broader expanded, different topics and, you know, kind of a different perspective of what's in the other cities and states.
All right. Didn't notice that when I went through that. All right, there's no other discussion, we'll vote. Keel.
Yes.
Jezz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
All right, public comments section, anything that's not on the agenda? State your name, so we, I think we all know who you are, but state your name, so we're official.
Sandy D., I'm here tonight for downtown Hartford. We've got the Bob Yerkes presentation coming up on May 6th. I've caught some of you at HADF or something, but some of you I have not. So, here's a little thing about, there's an evening program and then in the afternoon, from 3:00 to 5:00, he's gonna do a walk through downtown to get a feel for what's, kind of what's left or not or, you know. And then he'll talk to some of that in his presentation. If you don't know who he is, he's a, oh, his lifelong preservationist. He did the first 53 episodes of This Whole House for PBS. He started a college down in Hannibal, Missouri, started with dropouts, just to give them a vocational thing and teaches them to actually do preservation, actual plaster and windmills, actual preservation. And just a note, he tells me that Rapid City is considering starting a college like that out there. We could use one here, too. I don't know, maybe that's a good option for some development here. So, anyway, I will give you guys in Manhattan, there's your invitation and a little bit of the program. I don't know how many of you got the mural explanation. We got those done, did you have?
I got.
And Jake. And how many of you knew? We want to see you here. And I got you. We also are doing the Hartford pictorial history, blowups and large, I'd use that word here, enlargements of old photographs and they can be hung on the outside of the buildings. The first one goes up tomorrow on Bob's Body Shop. It's actually the interior of that shop. It was an old garage from 1913 to 63, I believe. But it's an interior picture of like 1970. So, see what you think.
All right.
We'd really like to do more of them. So, thank you.
All right, thanks for all your work on this day. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move down to applications, agreements, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. First up, we have a special event permit for Buffalo Ridge for a May 3rd car cruise. It's marked approved by staff. The documentation is in your bag. Motion to approve special event application, May 3rd car cruise.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jezz.
O'Hara.
All right. Next up, we have first reading of ordinance 741. This is to a men's section 8.0110, extension of water, sewer services. We got an updated version from what was in our packet. See Theresa, left one here on our... This was a wording change from, from two weeks ago when we first discussed this. To take the word government agencies out and we replaced that with municipalities.
So, from when we talked about it two weeks ago, we added the last section at the end of the paragraph that basically addressed that if other municipalities wanted to hook onto our services, they're not required to do the pre-education agreement. We had discussed that all at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. After Tom redrafted this and was put in the packet on Friday, we talked again on Monday and he, where the green is, instead of municipalities, we had originally had government entities. Well, that could be the state or the county and whatnot and we don't want to necessarily include them. We're not looking at regionalization with them, just that other municipality. So, the new version is the one I'd like you to vote on. It took out other government entities and replaced it with municipalities, so.
All right. Any action from the council? Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 741. About a second. Second. Any discussion?
She says that a typo just passed the middle of the paragraph where it says, starts on the left-hand line, charge connection and other fee. Should that be fees?
Yes. It should be, yes. We will correct that a little bit.
Sandy?
Yeah, a little correction like that's fine. Let the motion go through.
Yep, minor things like that. If you add a bunch of sentences or change the context, that doesn't work, but we have to have first read.
Anything else? If not, we'll vote. Brenneman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jezz.
Yes.
And O'Hara.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move down to reports. First up, Fire Chief Brian Schumacher.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Just kind of recap a little report we already have with 32 total calls in March, 13 of those in the city. April definitely has not slowed down with our incident go from winter to summer. Seeing a lot of incidents, fires, something like that going on right now. Training wise, last night we trained on obstetrics and airway emergencies. Fire next week will be training on fire hose deployment, structural advancement. Our combined training got canceled due to we were running calls for about four hours during that time period. Kind of good and bad going on. Good side right now, we have a program in conjunction with the state Fire Marshal's office that we have smoke detectors on our two primary trucks right now, Engine 1 Squad 5. That if we go on a call, we notice a residence that does not have smoke detectors. We're able to offer them the smoke detectors free of charge, but also part of that, we will install them to know they're not just going to sit in a box. We'll install them on the spot. So, we're all set up to do that. The bad side, our Engine 1 went out of service on Monday. A coolant leak on the engine. Right now, expected to be out of service through Friday, hopefully best case back in Friday. I don't know at this point, but our Truck 3 is primary engine at this point until we got it back operational.
Is Truck 1 the one you're replacing?
It is. Yep, so unplanned downtime here. With that, any questions from the mayor or the mayor or council?
Have they got any questions? All right.
One last thing, we do have a pancake meeting coming up in mid-May here, but we're starting to get some marketing out on, so I'd budge everybody to attend.
Everybody likes pancakes. Five.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Amy is gone. Her report's in the packet. Did she give you anything to add, Theresa, or no?
No, not this far, Amy. I do know there's not an HADF meeting tomorrow morning.
Correct.
Also.
Yep. I think she's at the conference. She called.
Yep. Yep, she's on Monday morning and she'll be back Friday, like Friday.
All right. With that, we'll turn over to our city engineer, Michael. Long time no see.
I know, it's been a while, Arden.
Yep.
Should be a quick one tonight, sixth in the month, real quick. Okay, we're doing a punch list, walk through this Friday just to get back to the contractor. It's been a long winter, just to, just to recall some of those items or all of those items that need to be corrected prior to closing the project. So, we'll do that Friday. And on top of that, Jeff has, Jeff Zacharias Construction has indicated that they do plan to and want to get it just done out of the way before he really starts picking up what this is. Water rec facility, really not much of an update on that one. We just continue to push forward plans to get them done so Rice Lake can get a, an updated cost estimate for the next meeting. Last item really I have is the bike and rec. I just provided an updated cost estimate and layout for you guys. We did reduce that width to eight feet and largely the routing of the trail is relatively unchanged, just a few minor tweaks to make grades work so that we don't need any culverts or anything under initiative flow. And then the two big things were the retaining walls, just due to that property line that was encroaching further than was shown on the concept when the grant was, when the grant application was submitted.
Do we have any scheduled on that yet or any...
They have to finish their plans and then we can go out to bed.
Yep, and so our, our water resources team has a draft for their report. We just went to KEMA to move through that no rise condition. That report will, you know, begin, begin FEMA's review. Plans don't necessarily have to be 100% done, but they have to be in a good spot to where in many ways don't affect that no rise condition. So, we'll, we'll get those provisions made as of here, I'd say the next couple, couple of few weeks. So, we'll have a timeline on that and then we will have a schedule of construction for later this year. Nice thing is later in the year, generally there's the creep of the floor just to less rainfall. So, that should make construction easier for contractors.
What was our grant on that?
The amount or the deadline?
Amount.
Good question, not offhand.
I'm sure it wasn't 353,000 dollars.
There you go, she got the right one.
So, the Lord willing, creeped over.
This is a reference.
150 or 170?
130.
We were both high.
Yeah, yeah.
130, so that's...
But we do need to have it completed by the end of the year.
End of the year.
Yeah.
Michael, anything else?
That is all I have unless you guys have any questions.
I got a crazy idea, but I'll probably talk to you about that.
Fantastic.
Has to do with the water tower.
No more.
I wanna watch.
You can all pan it yourself.
I'm from Lake Preston. We're divers, so I'm telling you, that might be on. Okay. I don't want everybody laughing, so I'm not gonna hear that. All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you. Craig is also gone. We have his report in the packet. Fortunately, got the wind to turn around from the north, so we're not smelling lagoons down that way. Yikes. All right, and he put some nice pictures in there. I was at Senior Dining today for lunch and it really looks nice. It really looks nice. We were debating the color, if it was Battleship gray or, yeah, we were debating.
Seniors picked it out, so.
Yeah, it's kind of a bluish.
Okay, let's do whatever they want.
It literally looks nice. It really looks nice.
Question on water meters. With the new meters, are you able to go like day by day and see usage?
Hour by hour, yes. Yep.
If we had a leak, whether it go on over the weekend, I could figure out when it started.
Yep.
Did you have a leak?
Yeah.
Oh.
That was on my to-do list. I have to take it to done. So, I thought I'd ask.
Call anyone. And they, each week run reports, so we can try to detect, detect large leaks before the next billing. So, you know, before, we can only just do it every 30 days. That's the only time the meters are red.
Sure.
But now, you know, Craig and I both are running different reports to look at high usages and be able to, and we've caught a few already, so we can catch leaks sooner.
I'll send an email.
Back to the senior center and the library. Is it possible to do an open house or something when they're down?
Sure.
Or maybe on the downtown Hartford?
Yeah, and the library's kind of talked about it a little bit. So, when we get it, and it's not completely done yet. We have a little electrical yet to do and the HVAC system needs to be done yet by 8:01. And on the library side, we are waiting for carpet. The library actually secured some carpet for one of their other locations. They just need to get it to our location and then we'll glue that down. So, well, once we get the carpet in, we pretty much can do it, because all the rest of that's just in the basement and around. So, if we coordinate, it'd be great to see if they'll take a look at it, so.
Yeah, good idea.
Definitely.
All right, anything else on? Where, wait a minute, are Rapid City, right? Is this deal is over here? Great. They appear or?
They're in here.
Yeah.
That's what we have been making.
Yeah. Okie dokie. Next, we move down to Finance Officer Karen Mower.
My report's in the packet.
Yep.
The election was good. It ran very smoothly. The Gage House, the senior center, worked out real well. There were no complaints that the gals got. And yeah, the gals were great. I want to thank them, Laurel, Darla, and Ori for sitting there all day. It's always kind of boring for them. 10% voter turnout isn't very high, so makes for a long day, but they made it through it, so. So, now you guys get to be the canvassing board and look at the poll book and the tally sheets and agree with the results that they came up with.
So, now I can open this?
Uh huh.
I'm ready to open this.
For example, question on the Hustler, Mower. In the bills report, the amount to DND is 9145 dollars. Your report's substantial more than 27.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's split between the general funds.
Okay.
How we budgeted it.
Sure, three different funds in the bill report.
Yeah.
Water sewer.
Yeah, so on that other report, it's in different sections, but they all add up, yeah.
There it is. Nine times three is 27.
Spot on there. All right, so we need to review this. I can hand this down. Everybody can take a gander at it. We all have to sign the official canvas sheet. So, this is the poll book and shows everyone who signed up to vote. I'll shoot that down to you guys' way and I'll take a look at that. This is the tally sheet where they counted. Number matches 24 and 57. So, I'll shoot that this way. We'll kind of do, go both directions and see what we can. Everybody take a look at that.
At least this has happened since I've been on council.
Well, I don't remember.
Been a while since we've been on.
The last election was 2020.
I don't even, I don't remember doing it, but we must have. Levon.
Levon and Gail Olson dug.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't remember doing this.
They held a while before that one, too.
Well, thank you to the ladies that did that.
And then the only other thing I had is...
I did count. Well, there are boxes of 50, so.
He's pretty shoddy. All right. Check. Chris gets nothing. Check. Look at that. All right, we'll shoot that this way and you guys can look at that one and you guys can look at that. There's not enough lines, so we can just sign a couple on the line if we need to.
More effort.
Say, do people vote? Can they sign on like out of your list and then exit?
People voted, can they sign that?
I will be a person who voted and wanted to, would I be able to sign?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're the board. You're the governing board that's...
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I love that.
Very interesting.
Yeah. I don't remember this last night. I don't remember though.
Remember it at all.
I'm definitely remember it because you guys can't say, you know.
Say that's the first thing you do.
Your days are numbered here, aren't they?
It was a special meeting. Sylvester Leto, the editor or something.
Special meeting.
You did the, with that and I remember saying, like, something with fines with the sheriff's department or something.
The check marks.
That was all that was on that meeting.
Get some hanging checks.
It is on file? It looks like they changed it.
I count, I count 57. I count 44. It must have got me 44.
Yep, it was 23 checks.
There's another.
So, what's the number of signers in the poll book?
It's 81, it's right.
And there's another tally sheet. They did two tally sheets, that one and there's one in the poll.
Yep, I seen that. Hold on. This one, they have 24. This one, they have, there's only 23 check marks. Here it says 24.
They had 23 and then they overruled it.
But in here, they have 15, 24, and that's 24.
They had 23, 24.
Yeah, yeah, they had 23 and it looks like they changed it in here.
There's a discrepancy. It goes to the lower more prominent hitter.
57, now it's correct. Now it's correct in there. And this says 81. So, what do we do?
Was there one voter that was not in the ward or something that didn't count or?
Well, they had 81 signers, so you should have 81 votes. So, they may have not have made a mark because you have two tally sheets because two people are recording them as they're written and they should match.
They should match how many people signed.
It looks like one is off.
Well, they both had 43.
Well, they both had 23.
But here they added an extra mark.
I would not.
And yeah, that's what I would say.
So, you can recount the ballots. Yeah, we can recount the ballots.
Do we need to do that before we certify this?
Can I go get them?
Yeah.
I think you should, just so it's all proper.
We're gonna make it official.
Yep, we're gonna make it official or it better be.
Hold our skills before we get 40/10.
I wonder what happened.
That was a great question.
Well, they should have, the lecture worker should have caught this on the front side, but I bet one person just forgot to make the last mark or something like that. That sometimes happens, but we'll verify it, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, you get down to the last one and they're kind of excited. We're done. We're done.
And the, can I see that?
Yep. 81, that number is correct.
Yeah, so we know, we know it's gotta come out to 81 because that's the number of people that signed the poll book. So, now just make sure the count.
And while we're waiting for Karen, if you guys want to take a look at the city council attendance chart, just check and see if there's anything. And... Is this sealed too? So, we need to officially open that too.
I'll just make a comment, but I don't think our mayor's getting here now for special meetings.
Yeah.
No, I'm dead serious about that.
And I will agree, Heaton's, Heaton's way more than previous mural.
I mean, he has an office in City Hall, but it's good.
You sound like we're supposed to cover some of those extra means, but he goes to a lot of extra means, so.
Okay, make sure. Did I get them all out of there? Okay, that's the best way to do this.
Wait till Karen comes back. I will do a count here, so hopefully we will both come out the same.
Okay.
So, we will start recording votes as you just call them off.
Oh, okay.
We just like the election.
I think this is on tape. Where'd she go? Oh, she got, oh, she's getting it. Oh, okay, she's getting the glasses.
Me and you will record as I think, so then hopefully we back up.
Yeah, I forgot my glasses, so.
Yeah, don't forget your glasses.
Come on, Brad. It's like they tagged it up, stuck it in there, sealed it up, so.
Okay, I'm gonna go Parker or Bowen.
Yep, okay, we need to say and we'll each do it.
You watch me to make sure. Yep. Parker. Make sure I don't get two together. Bowen. Parker. 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 Parker.
You got fancy sticky stuff here, damn it.
Parker. 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 I bet they got them all stacked together. Parker.
Makes it easy for us.
Parker.
You can imagine some would be quite nervous at this time.
Parker. Parker. Parker.
Players can't make an injury of our arm.
Parker. 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 Parker, player does mark D T. Parker, okay. Ready? Bowen. 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 Did you count those or down while you were counting them?
Okay.
Yeah, so I got fifty-eight for Bowen and twenty-three for Parker. Is that what you got?
Also, that's where they had it wrong. So it's fifty-eight and twenty-three.
Yep, to a total of eighty-one.
Yeah, and that's your eighty-one.
Okay.
So we probably need to change this.
Yep.
Yeah, they're signing off on. Yep, go ahead and.
Sign this, but we'll change it or?
Or you can just take a pen and put the new numbers in there.
Fifty-eight and twenty-three.
Correct.
That's weird too. I could say there was that first one that was not.
Chris had not signed it down on this end yet, so let's have, Chris, you need to sign that. That's the only signatures we need. We don't need anything else on this.
No.
Alright, you guys need to sign that. Then there's no motion or anything that needs to be made. This is, this satisfies that or?
There was a motion, yeah. Yeah, you should make a motion to.
To certify the election.
To certify and state the votes.
Okay, let's let these guys get signed and then we'll. Okay, alright. Somebody want to make a motion to certify the election?
Make the motion to certify that election. I'll second.
And we need to add with fifty-eight for Sean Bowen and twenty-three for Benjamin Parker. Alright, can I add that in?
Fifty-eight votes for Sean Bowen and twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
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 Yep.
Let's count.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to that?
Yep.
Any discussion?
Thank you for.
Yes, thank you both for. If we have an election more often, we'd probably be better at this. Alright, hearing no more discussion, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wassler? Alright, welcome aboard, Mr. Bowen. See you at the next meeting. Alright, everybody kind of was having a chance to look at their attendance chart. If you see anything that needs to be changed, make sure you let Karen know. We'll get paid for the first half of the year.
Let me know by May first.
Alright.
Way back seven years ago when I first got on council, I think the first motion that I ever made was to raise our pay. At least eight percent behind inflation.
So at least eight percent.
At least eight percent.
Alright, thank you Karen. Alright, city administrators report. Teresa, you got anything to add?
Just a couple of updates. Um, the Western Avenue sewer project, um, the contractor was site works on that. They have got a deadline of May fifteenth to get their punch lines items done, otherwise there's going to be damages that they need to pay. So, um, we did contact, um, two months ago, gave them that deadline and just this last week, we reminded them of the deadline, so hopefully keep them on task. And, um, as you know, we had DSU come out, did our cyber analysis of the city. Um, I actually had a meeting and we went through the report of the results today. Basically, we're pretty good, um, kind of with what they see everywhere, kind of our deal is that, you know, passwords, we need to have stronger passwords, you know, longer password. Make sure they don't have a pattern to them, you know, like a number pattern or use like the same word, but just keep it, you know, changing the end numbers or something, so they can see a pattern there, so, um, that and then, um, if they found in a few emails, they've gone back where we set passwords through emails or door codes and whatnot, that's a no-no. So we are having staff meeting on Friday, so we'll go through that with the staff and kind of get those things corrected. Um, the only other things that they had were just kind of information is that, um, they could find when they hooked up their device, that they could find some IP addresses and they're all on printers, which don't have a lot of crucial information, but they said we'll want to password protect those, so, um, we'll have our IT guy go in and do that. Um, and then our cameras, the device for our two cameras on City Hall, the maker of the device, um, it's a Hink Vision or whatnot. I guess it's been made in China and the government says those should be banned, so we should probably change out that device they come out, because when China did those, they put like a program in a backdoor where they can get into them, so, um, so he suggested, uh, they suggested we need to change that out because the government is saying we should not have any of those manufactured devices. So that was pretty all the gist, um, so that was their internal, you know, watching, you know, our server and our information there. Um, they did actually come out and do an external where they sent a guy out to see if they could get into anybody's computer, you know, if we'd let him access to the computers or to our offices or whatnot. City Hall did great. We didn't let anybody back in. Public Works though, uh, the guy came out and posed as, um, IT. He's here to fix a printer. Jim unfortunately let him into Craig's office, so. That's, when Jim did call Craig though, and when Craig come, he kicked him out, but Jim just, so we, and unfortunately there was, Craig had a password and so. All this will be addressed at our staff meeting on Friday. No, 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 so, um, that was pretty much the gist of it, so not anything crucial or big, but it was, it was a good review because these are the things that, you know, we can address and, you know, just make sure we, we're as secure as we can, especially with, you know, being a governmental entity, so we will take care of them, so that was the gist of that report. Just give you a quick hired date. Um, I'm interviewing light guards this week. I had three, um, yesterday that we hired. Um, I've got two more tomorrow. We've only had five app so far and they're, and the applications are all for returning guards and they've, they've all done good, so hopefully we'll, we'll get all five of those on board. Would still like to have two or three more just to cover all the shifts, so we're still looking. Still need, um, one park rec assistant for in July to help with that program. And then, um, we have hired two public works assistants. We would like to find probably at least one more of them as well, so we're still going to advertise for those positions. Just a quick website update. I did also this week get a draft of the new format, so this is the first draft, so I'll, um, look through it with staff here and we'll kind of see what we need to tweak or whatnot. I'm sure we'll have revisions coming back and forth, but, um, we'll keep working through that for our new website. Um, and I just have one quick update. Um, I got an email today about Summit. Basically, it was just a P U C ruling that, um, when, um, they started getting information, they're going to allow ten day discovery period, um, to, to reply to any items they discover, but that's, that's just kind of how they're going to run the hearing with the P U C, so that's the only update I, I've seen in the last couple of weeks, so.
Teresa, can I go back to the server? Did they recommend any training or do we have training for some plans right on?
They did not recommend any and we don't have, so you know of any, they, I shouldn't say. They didn't recommend, they, they gave, kind of went through the report quick because it's a twenty-two page report and they just kind of hit the highlights, but at the end, there's a lot of reference information, so there may be some opportunities in there. I'll have to go in and look into it a little further. Like I said, we just, just met today and it's the first time I've seen the reports, so, um.
I think it's actually like the phishing, you know, reminders people need regularly about clicking on links and things like that.
No, it'd be great to have some additional training, so if you guys know of anything out there, definitely let me know, so. Because this was a good exercise.
I also know Teresa added to her report the legislative session review from South Dakota Municipal.
Yep, yep.
Teresa and I attended the District Three meeting down in Alcestar and it was a really good meeting. It was a good chance to see some, meet some people from some other communities. But my biggest takeaway, Alcestar has a beautiful, uh, facility for hosting events like that. And right on their golf, it is really nice. I was really surprised.
Yeah, I was too for that. It's, it's a new, it supports their clubhouse kind of on one side and then they got kind of this event hall.
Meeting hall on the other side.
Meeting hall on the other side.
Really nice.
It was very nice.
Full service kitchen. They catered meal. They did everything. Full bar. I mean, that was so municipal course there in Alcestar. Uh, no.
No, I don't.
I think maybe the courses, but I wonder how they built that building. I think somebody, they said, didn't the guy say somebody gave them money?
I was gonna say donate, they got a big donor, yeah, they got a big donor.
To get it dealt, but anyway, that was kind of my, that was really a nice, nice facility.
It says now you can have like your license for municipal law, it doesn't count against your law.
Yeah, that was one of the things.
That's right. Alright, anything else, Teresa?
Uh, no.
Alright, good enough. Let's, uh, move on to new business. First up, did you approve the request for allocation for twenty-twenty-three operating funds for Humboldt Ambulance Service? Among the twenty-three, six, twenty-five, we've already approved this on our budget. Any questions? Hello there?
Evening, Kimmy Humboldt Ambulance. Yeah, exactly as you said, here to request funds. Um, we had, uh, last September when we were in, uh, talked about a little bit about, uh, what we had for call line at that time. Uh, we did end up with three hundred and thirty calls for service last year, non-record, but real close to it. Um, this year, we are, wait, we're for the first quarter, we're at a hundred calls already, so. Hopefully things paper off, but it's been plenty busy, I will say that. We'll see what, what happens with the interstate project. Um, right now, we are automatic mutually. I'm talking fire side now, I guess. Uh, Humboldt and Hartford have an agreement. Anytime there is anything on the interstate, uh, it's going to be automatic mutually for both departments to become either towards Humboldt or towards Hartford with the hopes that, um, one of us might get through, you know, depending on how far that traffic gets back and whatnot, so. Been in contact with highway patrol, DOT, the contractor, um, hopefully, hopefully if anything goes on out there, we can, uh, get everybody deployed at a quick time and, uh, get traffic rerouted off of there, so. Imagine that'll be, uh, I think new date or completion date on that, I believe is supposed to be November thirtieth, so.
Where, where does it start?
County line, which is about a mile and a half, two miles west of Humboldt exit, so.
Do they have the bridge shut, both sides? No.
In Humboldt, uh, they just have the, the north bridge is removed right now, so nineteen, highway nineteen has been closed for a few days, which, and people found the gravel roads to get around that, but, uh, so, but it is back open to a single lane now. The contractor called tonight. Said it will be open for the remainder of the project until there's certain, uh, new beams, then they will close it again, so. At least we have the ability to get back onto the interstate and get south of Humboldt, uh, a little better, so. And get on the interstate, come back this way.
I'd heard that that bridge was, or.
Yeah, they had pulled up, uh, they were supposed to be through, uh, possibly tomorrow. They were going to have it shut, but they were open to IRAs, so. Um, with that, uh, the only other thing I had was, uh, we just finished up with our annual fundraiser, cash or annual fundraiser that we have, and greatly supported by your guys' community as well as our own and, uh, it went real well. I was a non-winner again.
I must have not been a winner neither.
I'm twenty-some years of a non-winner, so. No, that went well, so, uh, I guess if you guys have any questions for me, I will try to answer them.
Any questions for Deb? Well, we appreciate you guys taking care of our ambulance service. I'm sure it helps.
Yep, and we appreciate all the help you give to you folks, so.
Alright, motions from the council regarding this.
Motion to approve the Humboldt ambulance request for their, uh, release of their twenty-twenty-three operating budget allocation.
I'll say. Any discussions? I'll say that. Alright, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brennan?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wassler?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Next up, discuss revising hours for City Hall. Teresa's asked about this. We've discussed this a little bit. The information is attached. They would like to go to. Because we're proposing going from seven-thirty in the morning to five-thirty at night, four days a week and eight till noon on Friday for forty hours. And Teresa would still be here all, all day.
Yep.
I assume. Public Works, it doesn't, uh, I don't mean that bad.
Okay.
That sounded, that sounded a lot worse than it should have.
You, you'd have it now.
We're gonna let them go, you gotta stay.
No, I mean, we're proposing this for, you know, the hours that City Hall is open to the. No, I mean, we're proposing this for, you know, the hours that City Hall is open to the public, so, you know, mostly those that'll have come early and stay late, Ron and Karen, and Jenny will have to figure out an extra half hour that Monday through Friday, so she can get her number of hours in as well, since it's shorter on, or Monday through Thursday, since it's shorter on Friday, but I, like I told Art, and then I put in my report, you know, me and Amy were kind of a little different, you know, Karen, if we got meetings Friday afternoon, Friday, we got to be here. Fridays, I'm probably here most of the time, anyway, because I got a packet to get out every week, whether it's PUC or City Council, so I mean, obviously, we know we've got to adjust our schedule around when we need to be here, so I mean, like I said, we're just talking about when to have the doors open for the public. We have, like I put in my report, city staff has talked about this at three different staff meetings. We're just proposing those hours for City Hall. Public Works will still be here, eight to five, Monday through Friday. They feel that best serves their needs and what they need to get done during the week, so they, they would stay the same. These are the same hours that Lennox currently has, and, and as I put in the report, we, there's actually, what, five communities around this area that kind of support similar hours, but these are the same hours as Lennox. Kyle is already working these hours, just because he switches off every other Friday, and with us working all day and Lennox only working half a day, it didn't work out on a different schedule, so he just follows Lennox because he alternates Fridays back and forth with us, so. And that also allows him to be here later in the evenings when Paul comes in, so they coordinate a little bit and do some training or whatnot, so that worked out good for him. You know, we look at, you know, there's several pros for like, one benefit is, yes, the employees would like this change, you know, it would, you know, be, be a benefit to them, but it also would give, the biggest benefit is it gives extended hours for the citizens. It will be open earlier in the morning and later at night. We all have had calls saying, hey, I can't make it there, eight to five, and we try to accommodate them. We have come early, all of us. We have stayed later all at times to come in. We have done stuff through email and whatnot, but this might be a little bit more convenient, because, you know, we know a lot of people in town don't work here in town and can't get here, you know, the eight to five or whatnot, so you know, it definitely could be an, an extra benefit for them to at least have Monday through Thursday, longer hours in there, but so.
The only question would be about the lunch hour. Does that stagger currently, or are we used to it?
Yeah. When I first actually started with the city, it was, we were shut down during lunch for that full hour. It was just me and Ron, but we were shut down, but then when I come to City Ministry, it's like, once again, people, well, I, I only can come in during my lunch or whatnot, so we changed that, just kind of on our own, say, we'll stagger our lunches so we can be here, so we've, we've had, there's always somebody here during the lunch period, and that's the way it's been for, for a few years here now, yeah, a little less, you know, and so, and yeah, definitely, we would continue that, you know, so we are open that full time, you know, we're not shut down.
Well, I think to give the citizens a chance to, at least a chance to get in here before they go to work or after, when they get off, is going to, is going to make a difference. I think that's gonna.
I know I've wanted to be here at seven forty-five before and couldn't, so. It's great.
You're, you're not the only one who has said that.
Yeah.
Just telling these girls a perfect example, last night, everybody had left, it was about a quarter after five. I just clocked out, I was walking out, and a guy walks in, didn't have door locked, oh, you're closed already? He was like, yeah, I said, what, what do you need, though? Can you get in? And he goes, oh, no, he, he says, nothing that you got to do. He says, I'll try to make it work it out. It's just, it's hard for me to get in there eight to five. That was just last night, so, you know, it happens, quite frequently. I have talked, you know, like I said, I gather information from these other cities that put in the packet. I talked to each one of them. I said, you know, are there issues, you know, with citizens or contractors, or, you know, give me the pros and the cons, you know, they all had nothing but good response. He said, employees like it better, citizens like the expanded hours, you know, the Monday through Thursday, so they, they didn't give me any negative feedback for, you know, expanded hours.
Motion to approve the change in City Hall hours, as we tried.
Okay. Boy, look at this. Everybody's just fighting this cycle.
Almost hit clock harder.
Hi.
I mean, we, we thought.
I ruined you guys, I tell you.
You didn't tell you, everybody knew, everybody knew you were breaking records.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you, yeah.
And we thought, you know, if this passed tonight, we probably start this, May first, it's a Monday, it's beginning of the month, we can get it, you know, obviously, we'll put out in our newsletter, our website, on Facebook, try to, you know, sign age, try to get it out, you know, as soon as we can.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brennan?
Yep.
Anson?
Yes.
Woslawka?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. She's only been asking since last year. I can tell you, by experience, she's been asking for a long time.
My hysterical laughter when I read that last week.
Yeah.
I think Teresa thought that we were not paying attention to her request. I would just say that.
Just be patient. It's reminding you about it.
All right, it's that time of the year. We have three mayoral proclamations. First one's for Arbor Day, and I'm not, they're in your packet, so you guys have all read this, but I will, I will summarize. There's some kind of good stuff in here. One thing it says, "In the city of Hartford, I urge citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and support our city's community forestry program." I think that was really great. I actually read through these and seen that line, and I thought, that really makes sense. "And I urge all citizens to plant trees, gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being for present and future generations. With that, I proclaim," I gotta find the right date. Today, April eighteenth as.
No way.
April twenty-eighth, excuse me. April twenty-eighth as Arbor Day Proclamation in the city of Hartford. Is that right? Arbor Day. Yeah, Arbor Day.
Yep.
All right. All right. And we don't need to vote on those.
No, these are just proclamations.
All right. Second one is regarding Silver Star Banner families. This, again, great, great organization, great. They support the families that sacrificed and lost men and women in the war or cursed or left. Says, "I, Arden Jones, Mayor of the city of Hartford, do hereby proclaim my appreciation of Silver Star families of America in honor their commitment to our wounded American Armed Forces members. I hereby declare May first as Silver Star Banner Day, to officially, an official day to honor the wounded and ill soldiers of the city of Hartford." So May first will be officially proclaimed as Silver Star Banner Day. The third one is Building Safety Month. May is Building Safety Month. Seems over the years, we spend time talking about our building codes and how we're doing things. We have full-time, we have a part-time building inspector, a full-time building and code enforcer, so we're making efforts to make sure that building safety is a priority here in Hartford. So I, as Arden Jones, Mayor of the city of Hartford, do hereby proclaim the month of May, Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with our communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. So proclaimed. All right. Anything for executive session?
Legal and personnel.
We need a motion for executive session for legal and personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.